Good evening. This is our regularly scheduled second, or September 24th, meeting of the City Council. Before we call this meeting to order, we have a few items to cover. We've got a couple of candidates who have asked to speak. District Attorney Mike Anderton is here, and if you'll make your way here, Mr. District Attorney, we'll give you a couple of minutes at the floor, at the podium.
Thank you. I'm Mike Anderton. I'm District Attorney here in Jefferson County, and I just wanted to come by and say hello. That's basically what I'm doing. We do have an election in November. I want to assure the people of Homewood that in the primary in June, Homewood treated me very well when it came to, when it came to looking at my qualifications and deciding that I was a better qualified individual. But I also want the city of Homewood and the people to know that if y'all have any questions, if y'all have any issues, call me. We'll talk about them. If you see something on TV, or you see something on the internet, because they can't put it on TV or the internet unless it's true, and we all know that, so if you see something that does in fact concern you, please, just give us a call, because we've got to be able to talk. We've got to be able to talk and have conversations among ourselves and not text each other and email each other and try to hold a conversation that way. We need to talk like adults so that we can talk through problems, and that's what I want to try to do. I thank you, I thank you for the opportunity to say hello. The people of the city of Homewood, again, if y'all have issues, or you have problems, give me a call. Let's talk them out, and let's figure out what we can do to solve those. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. All right, we also have Leslie Moore, candidate for Circuit Court Judge, Criminal Division, place 27 with Jefferson County. Mr. Moore, or Ms. Moore, are you here? I guess not. We understood that this individual was coming. Okay, next, we have a proclamation for Constitution Week. Is there anyone in the audience who is here for that? If y'all would make your way forward, we would really appreciate it, and I'm going to turn the meeting over to our mayor. He left me. He'll be back by the time y'all are up here, I promise. Mayor, I made a promise. Mayor, it's, it's, it's over to you. And ladies, we'd be happy to know whom you are. That's bad verbiage. Come on up.
I meant our names for the minutes.
Perfect. Robert will take care of that.
Okay. All right, House C. Ann Badham, and I'm in Cohaba Chapter of the National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, and proud of it. I have two ancestors or patriots that fought in the Revolutionary War.
My name is Lori Adams. I'm also from Cohaba Chapter, Daughters of American Revolution, and so far I have four. Thank you.
My name is Jessie Schnapper. I'm the Regent of Princess Sahoy Chapter, National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, and very proud to be a descendant of one of those gentlemen.
I'm Ellen Tucker, and I'm the Regent of General Sumter Chapter, National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution.
Thank you, ladies.
You're gonna read our proclamation?
I, I am.
And then we're gonna, then we're gonna be honored by photo with you, right?
Perfect. I can't wait. So we have a proclamation of Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd of 2018, whereas September 17, 2018 marks the 231st anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States of America at the Constitutional Convention, providing a historic opportunity for all Americans to remember the achievements of our founding fathers and to reflect on the actions of all Americans who have, for, for the past 231 years, have defined the words of the Constitution by exercising their rights and responsibilities as citizens. And whereas the Constitution is fundamentally predicated on governance by "we the people," making citizens' understanding of the Constitution and its framework an essential element of the future of our country and the civic health of its populace. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the remarkable document and the milestone anniversary of its creation and the additions to it in the form of 27 amendments. And whereas the National Constitution Center, America's first and only nonpartisan, nonprofit institution devoted to the Constitution, is located in Philadelphia across from Independence Hall, whereas the Constitution was drafted and signed and illuminates constitutional ideas and inspires active citizenship as a state-of-the-art museum, a civic education hub, and America's Town Hall. And whereas December 14, 1819, marks the anniversary of Alabama's statehood, and whereas in recognition of the signing of the Constitution of the Americans who strive to fulfill the duties and responsibilities of citizenship, the Congress, by joint resolution of February 29, 1952, designated September 17 as Constitution Day, Citizenship Day, and by joint resolution of August 2, 1956, requested that the President proclaim the week beginning September 17 through September 23 of each year as Constitution Week. So now therefore I, Scott McBrayer, Mayor of the City of Homewood, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through September 23, 2018, as Constitution Week in the City of Homewood, Alabama, and encourage all citizens to recognize and appreciate the importance of this endearing document to our nation and reaffirm our commitment to the rights and responsibilities of citizenship in this great nation. So ladies, thank y'all very much for being here.
Thank you for letting us call. Y'all could tell I was a school teacher. Aren't you glad you don't have one on the city council?
Yes, ma'am. Or it'd be 11 o'clock before we got out of here.
Yeah, but she's learned something.
Hold on, Sidney.
We'll only put it on the D A R, Facebook.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay, yeah, we need, yes.
You're welcome to stay around, but you're not going to hurt our feelings in the least if you don't. I assure you. Bye-bye. All right, we also had a presentation of a proclamation tonight for Mr. and Ms. Edwards for 35 years of service as crossing guards, but unfortunately, I understand Mrs. Edwards is hospitalized, so we'll, we'll hopefully... Oh, good. Okay, well, good. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I had bad information. If you'll give the mayor just a second. I assume he'll come back this time. Mr. Edwards, we are honored to have this presentation. If you'll stand here at the podium. Here's the mayor.
How you doing? I was gonna say, the pecan man. He knows where to find me at the funeral home when the pecans are in. Well, let's turn around here so everybody can see you. So we're here tonight to honor Mr. Edwards, and our prayers are with Ms. Mary. I understand she's a little under the weather. Okay, so everyone remember her in prayer. She's still in the, in the hospital, and so that's why we wasn't real sure if we were going to proceed with this tonight or not, so, but we're gonna go ahead, and she'll see it on camera.
Okay.
Okay? Whereas the city of Homewood wishes to honor and recognize the outstanding and commendable service of the husband and wife team of Jimmy and Mary Edwards. And whereas Jimmy and Mary Edwards have been employed by the city of Homewood for 35 years. And whereas Jimmy and Mary Edwards has served as crossing guards at Shades Cohaba Elementary School and now stationed in Edgewood area and served both Edgewood Elementary and Homewood Middle School. And whereas Jimmy and Mary Edwards keep a watchful eye on the children of many of our parents they once guarded. And whereas Jimmy and Mary Edwards have escorted thousands of the city of Homewood's most precious citizens, our children, safely across our city streets. And whereas Jimmy and Mary Edwards always man their posts regardless of weather with a smile and a kind word to all. And whereas the loyalty and dedication of residents such as these make up the fabric of our community. So now therefore I, Scott McBrayer, Mayor of the City of Homewood, Alabama, hereby express my sincere appreciation and thanks to Jimmy and Mary Edwards for their contributions to the city and highly commend them for the manner in which they have carried out their responsibilities. Thank y'all so much for all you do. We love you.
Mr. Edwards, before you leave, Mr. Edwards, is today a birthday of yours, perchance? And the rumor mill is that it's a birthday that ends in zero? Now, I would say to you that, that I personally would think that it would start with a six, but they tell me it might be more like a nine. Let's give you a round of applause for that. All right. What a wonderful evening already. We will call this meeting to order, and Dr. Bill Johnston with Dawson Memorial Baptist Church is here for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Before I begin my prayer, I want to say again, I think we had eight National Merit Scholars for Homewood High School. I just want to say thank you to Homewood and to our schools. Father, the rainy day, the sunny day, every day, is a day to praise you because we have life, we have breath, and this room is evidence of the freedom that our Constitution provides in this great nation, the freedom to assemble and to have representation, the freedom to dissent, the freedom to agree, and the responsibility as citizens. So we thank you for this room, and I thank you for this body, and I pray that tonight this be a productive time for this body as they handle issues for our wonderful city, and we thank you for our hometown of Homewood. Bless us through this evening. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Doctor, so very much. Robert, if we could call, roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gualtney?
Here.
Mr. Thames?
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Here.
Mr. Wolferson?
Here.
Mr. McCluskey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wyatt?
Here.
Mrs. Andrus?
Here.
Mr. Wright?
Here.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Here. So we are all in attendance tonight. The next item is the reading of the minutes for September 10th, but we're going to carry those over, and we will have those in a subsequent meeting. Board vacancies, is there any vacancy that we need to be aware of here at the chair?
Have we installed Ms., I don't know how to pronounce her last name, Carla Dumontier for the library board? We are ready to recommend her for Ward Five Library Board.
All right, well, who is this?
Her name is Carla Dumontier.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, say that right. Oh, sorry.
Mr. Burgett, have we closed the library board yet? Okay, well, we need to leave that open until... That's okay.
Can we, can we, can we make a motion to close it?
I think, I think, I think if we posted it, we need to leave it posted until...
It's been posted since...
Am I right, Mr. Kendrick?
It's been posted since... Yeah, it's been posted for a long time. Okay.
There we go.
Sorry about that. Sorry.
And again, your recommendation is? Yes, okay, three more days.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Right. Are there any other appointments? If there are not, we have one addition to the agenda. This is 250918, which is request for consideration of $36,000 for land acquisition for Phase Two Greenway, and I'm going to assume that was a request from Mr. Thames and Ms. Andrus. Okay. And that is the only addition. So the Chair would welcome a motion and a second for the approval of the amended agenda.
So moved.
Motion from Ms. Andrus, second from Mr. Wyatt. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous. All right, consent agenda. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval of that. Motion from Mr. McCluskey, second from Mr. Higginbotham, thank you. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay. We'll move on to the old business agenda, 180818, request for consideration to contract for a citywide traffic study requested by Mr. Gualtney and Mr. Thames. We have carried that over once. Are we going to carry that over again tonight?
Yes, please.
Okay. We are working out those details, so we will carry that over. 090918, request for considerations renew the AT&amp;T-U versus contract requested by Mayor McBrayer and Terry Williams with AT&amp;T. Chair would welcome a motion and a second.
I'll move.
Okay, motion for Ms. Andrus, second from Mrs. Smith. Any further questions, comments, or discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is Resolution 18... What? Okay, I understand. So we have a 1001 with one abstention. So this is Resolution 18123, and it is approved. So 060918, request for consideration for budget amendments. This is the 1718 budget. Am I correct, Mr. Jones?
Correct.
Requested by Berkeley Squires and Robert Burgett. Our acting city clerk. Report from Finance, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on the September 17th, voted five to zero to recommend approval of this item, five to zero.
So we have a motion from Finance, which carries its own second. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 18124. Okay, 270818, request for consideration to authorize the mayor to execute the property sale adjacent to 431 Greensprings Highway, requested by Mayor McBrayer. Report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The, the committee met, voted five to zero to recommend the city attorney negotiate the contract here, so that was the recommendation out of Finance.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance. Do we have any further discussion about this item? Carry it over.
Yeah, so that's just a report from Finance. It'd ask that we carry it over.
Okay, we will carry this over at this point, no problem. 050918, request for consideration of adding a crosswalk at 19th Place South at 29th Avenue South between Real and Rosemary and Urb... South at Twenty-ninth Avenue South between Reel and Rosemary and Urban Cook House requested by Thomas Longino and Ms. Andrus. Report from Public Safety, Mr. McCluskey.
Yes, thank you. The Committee met and voted four to zero to recommend approval of the ordinance and can be, of course, taken care of in-house. The motion was made by Counselor Andrus and seconded by Counselor Thames.
All right, thank you. First reading, Mr. Kendrick.
Yes, there's an ordinance to provide for the installation of a pedestrian crosswalk across Eighteenth Place South at the intersection of Eighteenth Place South and Twenty-ninth Avenue South in the city and to provide for penalties for... There are... Section one, the chief of police shall be directed to install a pedestrian crosswalk across Nineteenth Street, intersection Nineteenth, excuse me, Nineteenth Place South. The intersection of Nineteenth Place South with Twenty-ninth Avenue is directed by the chief of police. Section two, that all drivers of motor vehicles defined in the Highway Code of Alabama should yield to pedestrians located within a crosswalk as assigned above. Section three, if any person, firm, or corporation found guilty of violating this ordinance, shall be provided, penalties is provided by section one dash eight of the Code of Ordinances. Section four, that all ordinances or parts of ordinance contrated to the provisions of this ordinance are repealed. Section five, that if any part of provision or ordinance declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by a court of conference jurisdiction, such holding should not affect the other parts of provisions of the ordinance that shall be not affected. Section six, that the provisions of ordinance shall become effective immediately upon passage and approval by the mayor and city councilors or otherwise becoming law.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. McCluskey, second from Mrs. Smith. Roll call, please, Mr. Burgett.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes.
Mr. Thames?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverson?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, so this will be ordinance twenty-seven thirteen, and the Chair would welcome a motion and a second for adoption.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. McCluskey, second from Mrs. Smith. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverson?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, so twenty-seven thirteen passes unanimously. Next item, twenty-eight oh eight eighteen, request for consideration of a modified tree and landscaping ordinance requested by Mr. Thames and Mr. Gualtney. Report from special issues.
Yes, the Committee met on September seventeenth, and we voted five to zero to recommend referring this item to the Planning Commission for them to look at it more closely. And that was our recommendation, five to zero, motion made by Mr. Gualtney and seconded by Mr. McCluskey.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. And so Planning Commission will tackle that, all right?
Yes, sir.
Good. All right. Oh four oh nine eighteen, request for consideration of establishing the Sims Garden Advisory Board. We don't need a resolution here. Requested by Mr. Gualtney and Mr. Thames. But again, a report from special issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, we also tackled this one at our seventeenth meeting, and we voted five to zero to recommend approval of creating the five-member advisory board for the Sims Garden. Motion made by Mr. Gualtney and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, so this is a motion from special issues. Any further discussion?
I have one question.
Yes, Mr. Gualtney?
Mr. Kendrick, do you need those names tonight?
No, I just need for y'all to spell out who's going to make the appointment. The motions, I understood, is we want the advisory board, but we need to put in some mechanism, who will appoint individuals to designate.
Well, I think that would be council.
That would be council, I agree.
So we can submit the names. I mean, I have the names available, if you want to vote on them tonight.
Sure.
Why don't you list those names? Yes, I... Mr. Kendrick, to, in order to handle this correctly, do we need to vote first on the... Okay, you're just going to add that. Go.
Okay, so we have five names we wanted to submit for council's consideration for the Sims Garden Advisory Board. Matt Gilpin, Fletcher Smith, Ann Yates-Pate, Lindsey Huggins, and Harold Hudson.
Okay.
I'd recommend that the motion be revised to appoint those individuals to the advisory board.
Okay. So we'll revise the Committee motion to Mr. Gualtney, who made the motion, but to create the five-member board with the five people that have been recommended.
Great.
Second.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, and, Mr. President, and just a matter of procedure, do we need to also state that it'll be, remain under the selection of the City Council, Mike, or does it...
No, sir, if you name the persons...
It's implied, okay.
...in a minute, that'll be the member.
All right, thank you.
And we basically have done that, so we're okay. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously as well. All right, oh one oh nine eighteen, request for consideration for city to remove tree in alley right-of-way at one thirty-one East Hawthorne Road to accommodate homeowners' proposed construction of a new detached garage requested by Mr. Scott Jenkins, the homeowner and Wyatt Pugh at BEZ. Report from Public Works, Mr. Wright.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Committee met and voted three to zero with one abstention to recommend approval to work in the city right-of-way after hearing a report from Mr. Henry Hughes, who recommended removal of the tree. The motion was made by Counselor McCluskey and seconded by Counselor Wolverton and Counselor Gualtney abstaining.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Any further questions or discussion from anyone?
I have a question, because I don't...
Yes.
So is the tree, is Henry saying that the tree is not viable, it's dead? Okay. So we're paying to remove that tree?
No, we are not paying for the removal.
You're just allowing him to remove the tree?
Yeah, just...
Correct.
Okay.
Work in the right-of-way.
Okay. And he has already gotten approval from BZA to put the garage up, or does he need that?
I think we made the motion, or y'all made the motion contingent on that, right? On his plans.
Okay.
What the resolution says, the permit, permit the homeowner to construct a proposed new detached garage pursuant to condition upon plans and specifications approved by the planning engineering and zoning department.
Okay, because I think, I know he had a variance case that was in front of the BZA. Was this...
He couldn't get the permit until he had the variance.
Okay.
If you'll come speak at the microphone, Mr. Pugh.
I'm not aware of a variance case on this particular one. He's not submitted any plans yet.
Okay.
But once he does, if he needs a variance, we'll work from there.
Okay, so we're just going to make this contingent on him?
Contingent upon that.
Of getting his permit and his approval of his plans.
That's correct. That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Pugh. Any other conversation? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is Resolution eighteen one twenty-five, and that is approved unanimously. Oh three oh nine eighteen, request for consideration to work in the city right-of-way to replace sidewalk, remove trees, connect water supply in storm drain, construct retaining wall and tie-in curb for the Bell Center at seventeen hundred Twenty-Ninth Court South. Requested by James Decker, Brasfield and Gorey, and Mr. Pugh with our BEZ, excuse me, yes, Department. Report from Public Works, Mr. Wright.
Yes, the Committee met and voted four to zero to recommend approval to replace the trees. The motion was made by Counselor Gualtney and seconded by Counselor McCluskey.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is Resolution eighteen one twenty-six. Next item's the Committee referral agenda. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval. Motion from Mr. Higginbotham, second from...
Second.
Second from Mr. Gualtney. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved. All right, we enter into new business, and the first item is fourteen oh nine eighteen. And, excuse me, just a second. This is request set a public hearing and referral to Special Issues Committee for consideration of a variance to the sign ordinance at One West Lake Shore Drive requested by David Brant, Greg Cobb, our BEZ Department. And we'll set that public hearing for October the eighth. Mr. Kendrick, that's okay, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
All right. The next item is fifteen oh nine eighteen, and we're going to not address that tonight at this time. Nineteen oh nine eighteen, request to set a public hearing for consideration of declaring the property located at three oh seven West Glenwood Drive a public nuisance due to the violation of ordinance ten ninety-eight litter, ordinance thirteen ten, open and unenclosed storage, and ordinance seventeen fifty and nineteen ten, excessive growth from Mr. Cook, our code enforcement police department. And we will set that one also for October the eighth.
Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes.
For fifteen oh nine eighteen, are we just carrying that over?
We are carrying that over at this point, correct? Mr. Cobb, would you address this for the council, please?
Yes, sir, we would still like to go to Special Issues Committee next week, but just not, didn't want to, did not want to set the public hearing yet. We would like to appear in front of Special Issues next week.
Do we need to vote to send it? We'll just, we'll just add it to the agenda.
It was on the referral to the agenda, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We already referred.
Okay, good. Yes, we did. Twenty oh nine eighteen, request for consideration to work in the city right-of-way at three twenty-six Staret Avenue to place a concrete parking pad. Requested by Lauren Gosling and Mr. Pugh, our BEZ Department. Chair would welcome a motion and a second. Oh, okay, we...
Mr. Pugh, you have some reports.
All right, Mr. Pugh.
Yes, as you can see from the visual I prepared, the red outline represents where the proposed parking pad will be placed. I stretched out a tape measure and I drew a blue line there to indicate where the city's right-of-way actually terminates. It's ten to twelve feet. I was estimating that based upon some property marker stakes that were on-site, but had been sort of knocked down by landscapers and such, so allow a foot or two in each direction of that. But that's pretty roughly what they're requesting to do, is to place that. A little more difficult to see over on the other side there. This is up on the top, number one, that's the required parking pad that they're getting ready to place. So this parking pad that they're requesting on the side is not the ordinance required parking. That's actually going to be on this side. They're expecting to have some more drivers in the family pretty soon, so they don't want to have cars parked on the street if they can help it. The picture on the bottom shows what it looks like when people do park on the street as construction workers are placed now, so that's why they're requesting that, and I believe...
Well, let me, let me say this. Please sign in, please, your name, and with... We didn't set a public hearing for this, but I'm happy to hear from the...
Okay.
Okay. Has the Committee looked at this?
Was there, was there a reason we didn't send this to Committee to review?
No, it was my understanding that Counselor McCluskey, did you put this on the agenda for tonight?
I put it on the, well, I was requested by, when you and I had the discussion...
Yes, sir.
It was that they had already started to progress on this. I know based off the email that I'd gotten that at the first time Mr. Cobb went by, that you went by a second time and said, no, I think we need the council's approval on this.
Right.
So I put it on the agenda for tonight to be able to at least discuss it. Now, if we need to move it to Committee after this, we certainly can.
Okay, okay, got it.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
That's the reason for it popping up like that.
I think it needs to go to Committee.
Well, I mean, let's hear from it.
Sure.
At least, I did put it on.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, City Council. We acquired the property...
You are, I'm sorry.
I'm Brian Gessling. I'm the owner of the property. I'm Lauren Gessling's husband. And we acquired the property, and we've done some renovations, did an addition on the back of the house. Historically, this has been a gravel parking pad on the side, on the handbaw side of our property, and cars have been parked there for decades. And we added the new required parking pad in the front of the house that you all saw. But the house is designed with a side entrance as well, and that goes right into a mudroom and a kitchen. And so we wanted to put concrete there and not have it to be gravel. So we're asking for the consideration of the council to be able to do that.
But to be fair, some work has already begun.
We've not done anything yet.
Okay, good, good.
No. We were waiting to hear the council's decision before we did any work, so.
That being the case...
You seem to refer it to Public Works.
Mr. Wright, would you like...
Well, I just want to be...
Would you like to look at this in Public Works?
I think usually parking pads come in special issues, actually.
Okay, excuse me. Ms. Smith, would you like to look at this in special issues?
You're fine too, and I will say, I received an email from a friend of mine who lives all in Lakewood, who is in support of the parking pad as well to get cars off the street. So, I mean, I think there's neighborhood support for this as well, but we're, I'm welcome to address it in Committee next week.
Well, I can go either way, Mr. Jones.
Well, Mr. President, I just want to just clarify something. So we're not, we're not getting a variance, we're not, you know, we're not dealing with a driveway ordinance or anything. We're just dealing with work in the right-of-way, right? So, so, so we've, okay.
Yes, sir, that's correct. It's just work in the right-of-way. There's no variance required.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Gosling, just so you know, I'm, I don't have a problem with your request. I have a problem with deviating from the process that we normally create, and therefore the precedent that it does set.
So, and I guess the question is, and I certainly understand, Mr. McCluskey, that some work is going on related to, he's not pouring the concrete yet because he's waiting on City Council, so, so he's not really doing work. He's, he's getting it ready, but hadn't done it. And I don't, if there's no timetable problem...
Well, that was my understanding.
Okay, so, so why don't you speak to that?
That was my understanding.
All right, why don't you speak, speak to that?
Yeah, so, so it... We're, we're looking to get a certificate of occupancy. Final inspection's tomorrow. We'd like to be able to park, and we held off on the parking pad until we got the council's decision. So it actually is supposed to be done, it's supposed to be done this week, and so we're waiting for a decision.
Well, here's...
It is correct, Patrick, so.
All right, one-time situation. If there is anyone who wants to make a motion in a second, we'll look at this.
Well, I, I certainly don't mind doing it, especially since there is no variance request for it, and it's just a work in the city right-of-way, knowing that, you know, all the proper identification agreements and everything are signed. Then I've got no problem with all my things.
Okay, so we have a motion for Mr. McCloskey. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that is Resolution 18-127.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay? All right, 21-09-18, I'm, I'm a little puzzled. Request for consideration for budget amendments from Chief Ross and J.J. Bischoff. Is there, I thought this was 18-19 items. Is there a reason for this, Mr. Jones?
Uh, no, sir. We, we covered all the...
Yeah, they, these are new items that were brought to me after we had been to committee. There is an insurance issue with buying a new vehicle. The police are trying to purchase the vehicle in this calendar year. We have insurance proceeds, and they need an additional $18,000 to fully fund the vehicle. And that's, they are requesting money from carryover fund balancing capital to be able to purchase that vehicle. And once that item was added to new business, there was a couple other items. The $700 is an item that I added to clean up an account with SRO expense. And then there was a request, again, from the beautification board for another Christmas tree. And they requested late today, $7,000 to be funded into holiday lighting so they could purchase another tree.
So they...
And they want to do that in this calendar year.
So these are all 17, 18 items?
Yeah, they, these are all falling under this current budget before we pass the new budget, as I understand.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yes, they are for the current budget.
Can I have a, I have a question.
Ms. Smith.
Haven't we already discussed the beautification board's allotment for the holiday lighting and giving them money in the budget?
Mm-hmm, we, we did.
We've, we've funded them $20,000 additional this year for holiday lighting. And this is another request that they have came and asked the mayor for.
Didn't they?
For $7,000?
Is this a, a, artificial tree?
Yes.
Okay.
We've put a tree in for next year. And supposedly, that's the one that's supposed to go in the curve, the old curve at Homewood. And I've said they needed an additional tree for West Homewood, which they did a request on your, I think, yeah, from the...
Just, I've been on the same email chain you were on, so, yeah. They, it's, it was a request for West Homewood specifically, the, what, what, what they're going to use what we budgeted for, like J.J. said, it's going to be downtown Homewood. And this was a request specifically for Patriot Park.
So just on principle, I, I know it's annoying not having a group together, but then right here at the end of the fiscal year, I don't have a problem supporting these requests or having a surplus, so it just, if we don't do it now, the request is going to come to the next one, so.
I understand. All right, thank you. So, I'm sorry, Mr. Jones. I was looking to Ward Two. I agree with you. So we would welcome a motion in a second from Ward Two?
Well, I just have a question, actually, to start with. And, and it's not, well, it's related to this, so I guess it's related to my ward, but I'm, I'm trying to get a better understanding of... So they've requested money, and we put money in the budget for a second tree that's not this West Homewood tree. That is correct?
This second tree is the West Homewood tree. Second tree is West Homewood tree.
Yeah, this is the West Homewood, because I gave them my role in sand, and they took up all the holiday lighting.
Okay. So... So there's no other trees they've asked for except this tree?
Right, this is for West Homewood. So they've asked for two trees. One is going in downtown and one is going Patriot Park.
Okay.
They're also doing...
And the downtown tree is just the tree that we got every year, or is this an additional tree?
No, it's an additional tree.
That's what I'm trying to ask.
Right.
Yeah, this is a new one.
Well, where's that going to go?
That's going on the...
Like, two blocks from City Hall Street?
Correct.
Can I ask why that is? I'm, I'm sorry, I don't understand that. Why would we do another tree so close to the tree we have? I'm sorry, I just don't understand.
Because it's on 18th Street. I'm not, I'm not advocating it, Ms. Higginbotham, I'm just saying that's the reason.
I have, I personally have no objection to another tree on the other end of the city and having two total trees, but the idea of... Did they ask us to pay for that, too? No.
Mr. Jones, please, excuse me.
I don't, I don't, I don't...
We don't have one in Hollywood yet.
I like to get down into the trees. I like to be up here. But I, I really, I do not want to purchase another artificial tree. I think we should support tree growers and make something about bringing in a tree, a live tree for our business districts. I mean, that's what we do in Edgewood. I, I think it'd be much better to, to bring in a live tree each year as opposed to having to store an artif, that's just my opinion.
Edgewood's artificial now, just because when the storms come through, we used to have a tree up here that was live, and we anchored it to the pots.
Okay.
And it kept blowing, and so this one is self-sustaining.
Okay.
Remember, the tree is, excuse me, council, remember, the tree is only one part of this, these budget amendments.
I do have...
The 18,000...
Well, and I do have one question. Is, is this tree similar in size to the one that's in Edgewood?
No, I think it's...
This is a 12, this is a 12-foot tree.
Yeah, 12-foot, yeah.
And the tree they've already purchased with the $20,000 was an 18-foot tree.
That, but that wasn't, that tree wasn't $20,000. That was also the wreaths and finishing out the lighting.
It was a, it, correct, it was, it was, it was the tree, the ornaments, and it was a package of wreaths as well.
Yeah, 41 wreaths.
And it was an 18-foot tree, and this, this tree's a 12-foot tree. 12-foot tree, pre-lit.
Yeah, and, and ornaments also.
And ornaments.
Yep.
And how much are they asking for?
7,000.
Well, let's see.
That's, that's...
Well, let's, all right, and let me ask this. Is there a motion for approval of the budget amendments without the tree?
Let, let me say this real quick. It's, her number is actually 5762. So it's 3990 for the tree and 1772 for the ornament package, so.
So it's less than the second?
Is there a reason, Jennifer, that we need to approve it now and we can't even add it to their budget for 1819?
No, there's not a reason. You can, they, they don't have...
I mean, that would just give them time to maybe come show us the tree they're...
Sure.
We ask other boards and groups to sort of present to us, you know, what they're planning to spend the money on, things like that.
Sure.
I'm not necessarily against the tree, but it would be nice to know what we're getting.
Yeah, Mr. President, this is a, this is a new group, and we're excited about it. And we want to, and we gave them a healthy budget and, and coming back for, you know, approximately 30% increase. Let's let them work with their budget they got this year, and we'll look at it next year.
Again, the request is for consideration of budget amendments less the Christmas tree and its ornaments.
Second.
Motion from Mr. McCloskey, second from, on this side, Mr. Thames. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So that's 18-128. Next item is 22-09-18, request for consideration to transfer a portion of Lake Shore Parkway for a portion of Greens Springs Highway with Al Dot, requested by Mayor McBrer and Jarvis Leonard with Al Dot, a friend of mine. And I would say to you that we'll carry that over.
Well, actually, I just wanted to bring your attention, so let's, if we could, I'll send it to finance.
Okay.
Because there are going to be some financial considerations involved that the city will need to consider, so if we can get that placed and announced in the open next, we can give our documents while we're asking for them, something we can look forward to.
No problem, Mr. Jones. We will send that to finance, okay?
Thank you.
All right, okay, 23-09-18, which is request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of September 10th, 2018, through September 23rd, 2018, request by the City Treasurer and Finance Committee, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I reviewed the invoices this time and had several questions that Mr. Burgett answered, so I would move for approval of, of the vouchers for September 10th through the 23rd.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Jones, second from Ms. Smith. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Mr. Burgett, that's 10-0, okay? Because Mr. Wolverton had to step out. Thank you. All right, finally, the multifaceted item, which is 24-09-18, request for consideration of the Finance Committee's recommendations of the 2018-2019 budgets and adoption of resolutions appropriating sums and amounts for the following funds. We'll begin with the General Fund, which includes the cost of living allowance of 2%. Report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Would you, Mr. President, would you indulge me in just some general comments?
Sure, I'll be happy to.
Before we pass, before we go through each one. I want to mention a few things. The, the Finance Committee, you know, as you know, we, we met, we had seven, eight different meetings, so we started on September 10th, and the 13th, the 17th, the 18th, the 20th, and we've had a meeting today. So we spent a lot of time, I want to thank everybody on the committee and everybody on the council for coming to the, to the meetings. They were very educational, and I think we all learned a little bit more about how the city operates. I want to thank Mr. Burgett for his hard work on the budget. Thank you for the mayor for presenting a good budget. And thank you, J.J., for kind of coordinating, and thank you all the department heads for your patience, kind of as we, as we worked through everything. I'm, I'm excited kind of as to where, where we are with this. As you, as you mentioned, Mr. President, we, you know, we did approve as part of this a 2% COLA. That, that's at the city's cost of $493,533. The mayor's budget also had, had, had budgeted 6% for health insurance cost for employees, and the actual increase came in at 5%, which is, which is very good. So it came in less than what we had anticipated. So we went ahead and, as a city, the, the committee voted to, to handle all of that increase. That's a cost of 109,000, so we'll be handling the, the entire increase for the health insurance on that. Also, there were increased funding of RSA contributions for employees. The, that is $372,951. The, we also are, a couple of items on, on the capital side, we're excited, we have the library here, so we're excited about the 3,000-square-foot expansion, and that also includes electrical upgrades at 1.4 million. We also are, look, excited about the pedestrian bridge. We put that over 280, put that in the budget. We're going to be moving, and this is again part of the commitment from the mayor and from our council to continue to pave. And I feel like we've, if you've seen the paving list, we, we are really doing wonders with it. And so we're going to be moving another million dollars from debt service to capital for the continuation of our paving project, so very excited about that. Then we're also, I want to thank Mrs. Smith, because I put her to work on looking at an energy audit, and she spent hours and hours, I don't think she'll ever forgive me for putting her on that committee. But the, you know, the, that is a cost to the city, but we're, we're, we're looking at the savings of 160,000 each year as part of that. And, and that's going to be continual savings that we, that we're going to have. I learned a lot initially for the police. I was not for approving a watchtower, is that what you call it? But after getting the good presentation, I, we're putting that in capital as well. So then, we're also, you know, when getting, getting down to it, two new garbage trucks, a bucket truck for traffic, five vehicles for police, Kenworth dump truck for street. So, you know, all of those total 1.2 million. The, in addition to all of the items that I've already mentioned, in, in looking at it, we're, we're going to end up with a surplus, as we have for many, many years, under the mayor's leadership. And so we, we want to also implement the, the bonus, and it's going to be the same bonus that we, that we instituted last year. And that is up to 325,000. And then there are various tiers that go from, if you've just been here a year, sorry, you're almost a year, if you've been here a year, you get a $350 bonus. And, and that is grossed up, meaning we're, we're picking up the tax, so you're going to end up with 350 gross. And net is what you're going to get. And so all the way up to, if you have been here 20-plus years, a one-time $2,000 bonus. So the employees have, you know, really appreciate that. Someone said, we really appreciate not get, being, given a Jelly of the Month Club certificate. And we're, you're giving us something to be proud of and, and to be proud, especially coming right, right around the holiday. So I think employees have, have really appreciated that and just gotten really good feedback from department heads and everyone throughout the city. But I could not have done all of this without the, the help of the committee and everyone who can, who participated. So thank you for allowing us to, to take a good budget and, and make a few tweaks. And I think we're, we're passing a really, really strong budget. And as we've mentioned before, we're very blessed in Homewood, and I believe our blessings are going to continue on for the foreseeable future.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I appreciate that. So the first item is the general budget, including the cost of living or COLA of 2%. Report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, I'll stop rambling. Five to zero approval of, of that.
All right, thank you, sir. Any further discussion other than Mr. Jones? There being none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is Resolution 18-130. All right, Grants, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero from Finance.
Thank you. Any further discussion about grants? There being none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that is Resolution 18-131. All right, next item is the 7 cents gas tax, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero from Finance.
Thank you. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is Resolution 18-132, the 4 cent and 5 cent gas tax, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero recommendation from Finance.
Thank you, sir. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimously Resolution 18-133. Board of Education Trust Fund, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero recommendation from Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, I'm sorry.
I was just going to be closing, uh, clearing my throat, sorry.
Huh?
I was just clearing my throat.
No problem. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is Resolution 18-134. Debt service, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero from Finance.
All right, so we have the motion. Do we have any other discussion? If we do not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is Resolution 18-135. Capital Projects, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero from Finance.
Thank you. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous, and that is 18-136. Environmental Escrow, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero from Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is 18-137. Insurance, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero from Finance.
Thank you. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous, and that is 18-138. All right, E-911, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero from Finance.
Thank you, sir. Any further comments? If there are not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is 18-139. All right, next is Corrections and Jail, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero from Finance.
All right, any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Good, that is 18-140. Corrections and the Court, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero from Finance.
All right, any comments? There being none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is 18-141. And then Court Special, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero from Finance.
All right, any comments? There being none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. That is 18-142. Technology, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero from Finance.
All right, comments? There being none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is 18-143. Next is General Obligation Warrant for 16, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero from Finance.
All right, comments? If there are none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. And that is 18-144. Judicial Administrative, Mr. Jones.
And five to zero from Finance.
All right, comments? There being none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is 18-145. Thank you very much, and I think that gets us to the end of that. And with that, Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, I'm sorry, 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 okay. Before Mayor, my fault, 25-09-18, request for consideration of the 36,000 for land acquisition for Phase Two Greenway, Mr. Thames and Ms. Andrus. Any comments? Well, first of all, is there a motion? Motion from Mr. Thames, second from Mr. Higginbotham. Any further discussions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is eighteen one forty-six, and it is unanimously approved. And now, mayor, your turn.
I'll be very brief, Mr. President, thank you. Chairman Jones, great job this year again in finance and to all, all of you, really, who've come to the, to the meetings, who've participated. I think like Walter said, we did learn a lot about the budget, and it's, it's a fun time. It's a fun time to be in the city of Homewood, and we have been blessed. And so for me, especially tonight, to get a unanimous vote on a budget gives me a good feeling. And I just wanted to publicly say I appreciate the amount of work that y'all put into it. I don't know exactly what the number is on what, the difference in what I proposed and what you passed, but it's, it's, it's a close, it'd scare it to death. But it makes me feel good, and it makes me feel even better to know that y'all went through the process, had a lot of questions, put a lot of work into it, and I think we have a really good budget that's going to help us have a great year. So again, thanks to all of you very much for your time and effort, and to your family too, for the amount of time that it took you being away from them, not just on a Monday night, because there's more than that. So again, Walter, thank y'all.
Thank you, mayor.
Mr. Limbaugh, could I interrupt? Do we need to get a vote for the transfers? Would we not? Okay, thank you.
But thank you, I appreciate it. Mr.
Yeah, having that speech, you better be unanimous.
Mr. Gualtney.
I'll keep it brief. I would just like to say it is a pleasure to work with such a professional group of people that can always find a common ground and work out solutions for our budgets, and it's just my pleasure to work with this group of people.
Great, thank you, sir. Mr. Thames.
Thank you, mayor, for proposing a good budget. It was fun. Had some fun meetings over the course of the budget. I think there's some improving relationships, you know, between our city and outside entities, and I hope that carries forward. Also, saw the bulldozers working at Spring Park today. I don't know if anybody's seen it, but they have raised it, so I'm excited about that. Do we, I don't think I have anything for, should look. Nope, no P and D. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Mr. Higginbotham?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Mr. Gualt, Mr. Wolverton?
Nothing special, I'm just excited to see all the equipment out at the new public safety building as well. I drive by that every day on the way to work now, so excited to see all that go up soon.
Anticipate completion latter part of, third quarter of eighteen? Nineteen, I mean, I'm sorry, nineteen, nineteen. Thank you. All right, Mr. McCluskey.
Yes, first of all, I have to say, I think if my wife asks me a question tonight, my answer's going to be five to zero from finance.
That was good. That may be the comment of the night, Mr. McCluskey.
And Mr. Thames, you said you don't need to meet, and I'm assuming finance, from five to five-thirty?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so we'll do public safety at five-thirty, and I'll probably need, based off the shared mobility ordinance discussion. Mr. Gualtney, do you know if somebody's coming to speak to that? You don't? Okay.
Starting discussion.
Just starting discussion, okay. Let's do, I'll do thirty minutes.
Okay, good.
And that's it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jones?
I'm sorry, Mr. McCluskey, but we forgot, as part of the motions that we made for all those funds, we failed to do the bonus, so.
Which we will do at the very end, okay?
Okay, and that's five to zero coming out of finance. Nothing further.
That's good.
That's all.
But you are setting it at five o'clock for.
Yes, five o'clock.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Okay, so I would like to reiterate what Dr. Johnson brought up, that Homewood High School has eight national merit semi-finalists this year, which is amazing.
It is.
I don't want to point out, but we do have one more than a certain other school system somewhere nearby, just saying. And.
But we're not keeping score though, are we?
We're not, no, not at all. Just saying, just not naming it, I didn't say anything. The sidewalks are in on Salter, which is super exciting, have had lots of positive feedback from the residents over there, and the Patriots have their homecoming this weekend. Game is Friday night, homecoming dance is Saturday night, and lots of a full week of fun festivities. The parade is in downtown this Thursday.
Great. Are you setting special issues?
I guess, you said thirty minutes? Okay, so six, and I think I have five issue, five things, so I'm going to say, I'll just go ahead and say to six-thirty. I don't think I need that much time, but I don't know. Six fifteen, would you let me say six fifteen? You feel right? But if I go over, just no, I warned you. Six fifteen, six to six fifteen.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Nothing tonight.
Ms. Andrus?
I would like to thank the Hollywood Garden Club for having me last week to speak, give them update on the bridge, and thank them for their help with that as well. I would like to thank the Homewood Greenspace Initiative for the pop-up park that they did on Friday. I thought it was a great job and appreciate their efforts with that, including our own Jane Reed Ross. I would like to thank Mr. Cobb for coming out two days after being asked to take care of a curb. We've got a visually impaired parent at Shades Kahaba that was having a hard time maneuvering the curb going down into the school, and so we, Greg was out there within two days to make it ADA compliant and to fix it with the ramp, so appreciate that so much. And, okay, we've had a busy month, so now it's time to celebrate. So September twenty-ninth, it's Saturday morning at eight o'clock, come on out to Over Easy. We're going to have biscuits and grits and pancakes and Kahaba Brewing Beer, and Hydro Live will be there, and Mountain High Outfitters and Track Shack and Door Prizes and Three Hundred Runners and probably coffee and donuts, and so come on out and participate in the fundraiser for the bridge. You don't have to run, the run's at six, so you don't have to run, you can just come out. Mayor, I want you to be there. What's that? Yeah, exactly, exactly. So we will be parking at the church across the street, so if, or you could park at Peter's house and walk. So I hope to see everybody there, it's going to be a big time, so.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Thank you for doing that, Ms. Andrus. A congratulations first of all to the mayor on the budget, and a congratulation to Walter in leading us through it, through it all. It's always a good experience, and also to my fellow finance committee members, it really does speak volumes as to how much attention we do give to that process and how we pay attention to it, and really how well it's working now. And I take my hat off to the mayor and Walter on that. And also, I want to take my hat off to Mr. Robert Burgett, who took on the task of the budget for this year, and congratulations, sir. You have survived, and we're very grateful for your work this year. So thank you for your, your help in sticking in there and hanging in there with us through it all. And also, we'd just like to point out, it's not only a good time to be in Homewood, it's also a good time to work in Homewood, and we love our employees, and we do try to do all we can every year, but this year, I do want to just note that we have merit raises, we have bonuses with taxes being paid, we have retirement being picked up by the city, we have health, increased health costs being picked up by the city, and we have a two percent COLA. So congratulations to our city, congratulations to our employees. That is a nice package, and we are happy about it. And in a large part, we're able to do it, and correct me, Robert, if I'm wrong about this, but one thing we didn't quite fully underscore was our growth that is in our budget this year, which was approximately a ten percent sales tax growth. Is that correct?
Ten percent sales tax in the general fund? Yes, sir.
That is.
Phenomenal.
Through the roof. And let's keep it up, and it is a good time to be in Homewood, so thank you all for that. And P and D, thank you all for letting me meet at six fifteen, and hopefully we'll take up to two and a half minutes and be done, so we'd just have a couple items. Thanks, Mr. President.
Someday, Mr. Wright, we'll start on your end again, I assure you. Okay. All right, two things. One, thank you, mayor, J.J., Mr. Burgett, but Mr. Jones, you organized this one beautifully and committee as a whole, and all the council members. We, every meeting we had, we had at least nine, if not all eleven, council members there, and that, that speaks to the quality of the individuals that I served, had the privilege of serving with, but it also speaks for all of Homewood to the dedication that this council has, and yeah, we're patting ourselves on the back a little bit, but that's okay. Final item is the longevity bonuses. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, they're just, yeah, the one-time bonus, so that did come out of finance, five to zero tonight, so that's, that's a recommendation from finance. Make sure you heard it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And that is unanimous.
It was up to three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand.
Right, and that's eighteen one forty-seven. So with that, if there is nothing else, we stand adjourned.